Glenn just logged in, I'm missing Austin.
He's got a couple of minutes yet. Hey Tim. Thank you for the hat, I love it.
Okay, Austin's here as well.
Great. Had to get my hair buzzed again, since how long we've been in this? Think Laura likes it. Christie, thank you for fixing the temperature up here, it's not 90 degrees anymore.
I wanted to ask you about that because they never got back to me.
Yeah, there was one button on the thermostat that you just have to hit it and then it lets them know that you're here. And then it, then it kicks on, I didn't know that, I thought maybe, you know, turning it up or down might let them know I'm here.
You would think.
You would think.
Oh, I see you're sporting the hat, that's nice.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thanking you for, here, let me get real close.
It's awesome.
Love it.
There you go.
Happy casual Monday.
That's it, man.
Looking forward to casual Tuesday and Wednesday too, Thursday.
I'll buy Thursday, Friday. Saturday and Sunday.
I think we're gonna try to meet in person next time on the 18th, 18th, try to do something in the community center. Tim has been pushing that, really wants to see everybody again, so we're gonna make it happen somehow.
Tired of getting, tired of getting dressed up.
This conference will now be recorded.
Has Pastor Bush joined us?
Let me check on the callers, hold on one second, he might be one of the callers.
Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Hello?
Good evening, this is Pastor Bush.
Hey Pastor Bush, we're gonna get started in just a minute, thanks for being with us tonight.
Oh, thank you for having me, sir.
Derek, Chief Bennett will be doing the American flag as well.
Great. All right, we've got everybody, it's seven o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order, it's Monday, May 4th, 2020, at seven o'clock. Happy to have Pastor Richard Bush with us from Mount Zion Baptist Church, 1789 Hawthorne. And Pastor Bush, if you'd lead us in the invocation in place, please.
Let us pray, Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven, give us this day our daily bread, forgive those that we've trespassed. Give those that trespassed against us, lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For this is the prayer when Jesus told his disciples, he said, when you pray, you pray Our Father. Dear God, we come asking you to continue to guide us, lead us, and watch over us. God, we ask you to watch our country during this pandemic time. God, we know that you could control everything because in the Book of Genesis, the Bible declares, in the beginning you created the heavens and the earth. So dear God, we know that you have all things under control, so dear God, we say thank you in advance. Now, God, I ask you to bless each and every city council, those that are listening under the sound of my weak voice, I ask you to bless our mayor, God. Continue to strengthen him, continue to give him the infinite wisdom that he needs, God. To continue to direct and lead us in the right directional, God. And we pray that you would just anoint his staff, God, that they would continue to lead and follow him as he directs us. And God, we ask all these blessings, bless each and every family, bless our seniors, bless our city, oh God. In the name of Jesus, by faith, we declare this done in the precious, prominent, prodigious name of our Lord and Savior. Jesus Christ, the Son of the living God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to which is stamped, for one nation unto God, into liberty, with justice and freedom for all, amen.
Pastor Bush, thank you so much for joining us, and you've been in all thoughts and prayers, I know that we're in difficult times, but I know you've had it extremely difficult with family loss and other things happening in your life, and we just been thinking about you, and let us know if you need anything, okay?
And I appreciate you, and I thank you for your prayers, and those of you that do not know. I lost my mother during this pandemic situation. So I just ask you all to just continue to pray for us and pray for our church and our city. Thank you so kindly, man, I love you all, God bless you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Next item is agenda changes, we have none. Item three is the mayoral report, and I've got a couple of things. I just want to say how great I think this city is, and it just continues to amaze me what we're able to do together. First, I want to thank everybody, citizens, volunteers, and staff who made the ceremony honoring Officer Ewing. So great, just seeing the citizens line the street, you know, safely, appropriately distanced, with hands over their heart and flags waving. Really, really incredible stuff, and a great sendoff for our fallen hero, so thank you all for that. Just a kind of an update is where we are as a city right now, in the middle of this public health crisis. Since we last met, the governor suspended the shelter in place, with a few exceptions, people over 65 and medically fragile. And this was following the previous week when he opened up, allowed businesses to open up under certain guidelines and requirements. You know, here in Smyrna, a lot of business and restaurants are choosing not to open, even though they can. And the restaurants, some of them are remaining carryout only, because they're not quite comfortable with the current health concerns that are still out there. And I, you know, I'm a firm believer that we're not out of this yet, there's no script for how this turns out. You know, we're hoping for the best and that this thing subsides, but in the meantime, as far as the city goes, we're gonna be real cautious in how we proceed with reopening things, making sure, number one, that our citizens and staff remain safe. And we continue getting data every day and making decisions as we get that information about how we're gonna do things. But right now, our public buildings are gonna remain closed, I would anticipate at least for another few weeks. We're gonna try to do a phased-in approach where we have some staff coming back in staggered shifts, getting things ready and going from there. But I don't think we're there yet, the state data, we're looking for 14 straight days of decline in cases, and that has, we haven't come anywhere near to that yet. You know, gathering areas in parks remain closed, there's been a lot of talk about the ball fields, you know, we're not, I want to open them up as soon as we can, trust me. But the encouraging gathering of folks right now is not really what I want to do, considering that we're still in the middle of this thing. Some things coming up, we're looking at ways, we talked this morning, safe ways to open up the tennis courts at Tolleson, and maybe the restroom there. Having a staff member always over there to help sanitize and keep things clean. We're putting together a plan for how we can meet in person coming up, particularly for things that require public hearings, like zonings and other matters. The talk this morning was about having our next council meeting possibly at the gym at the community center. Where everybody that comes in is temperature checked, has a mask on, and is, you know, our seating setup would be appropriately socially distanced. And then, of course, anybody who, who is over 65 or medically fragile, or for whatever other reason couldn't be there in person, but wanted to provide public comment to do so, either submit them prior to the meeting or figure out another way to do that. So we're working on things, we're working on moving into the next phase of this, but just remaining cautious. And just, just to note, Department of Public Health has asked folks, if they're out in public, wear masks, wear cloth masks. And there's CDC information about how to clean the mask and, you know, make sure they're sanitary. Particularly, wear a mask if you're in the grocery store, if you're in line somewhere, if you're in any kind of setting that's a little bit closer contained, it's super important. And they're encouraging you to do it anytime you're out of your house, so we, I encourage that too, I think that'll be hugely helpful in preventing the spread. And so that's where we are there. And then just a quick highlight, just recap some of the positive things, I like to do this because we get so much negative news. The Support Smyrna effort eclipsed $100,000 raised this week. We're over 1,100 individual donors, so it's, we're literally helping hundreds of families get groceries and people who have had a hard time. And it's, it's really nice to see everybody coming together to do that. The Hot Meals Program is now expanded to three locations, we've got four restaurants involved. And they're, they're doing over 1,300 meals every week to families in need, so that's, that's a great program. And then our police department started the program where they're delivering groceries to, to our vulnerable population. And then the fire department jumped on too, so they're all, all of our public safety personnel is combining to do that, and that's been a huge success too. So, so a lot of good things happening here, even though we're, we're in the middle of this crisis, and I can't wait till it's over with. But in the meantime, really proud of where we live and all the people and everything that we're doing as a city to come together, it's pretty, pretty cool to see. The next item on our list is land issues, zonings, and annexations. Can you move the agenda up a little bit Heather, so I can see the rest of it? Thank you, item 4A 2020-158 is the approval of the building permit fee waiver request for UCB Pharmaceuticals, and Tammy Sadler Jones, background please.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. The fee waiver request is being made under the city's incentive program outlined in chapter 79 of our ordinances. The request for the building permit fees and the related recording fees are authorized under the aforementioned ordinance. The total fee waiver request for the building permit and the recording fees is $180,980. 980, $950, pardon me, can't talk this evening. Rusty Martin is going to give you a more detailed presentation on this fee waiver request from UCB. Staff does recommend approval.
Yes, sir. We thought it'd probably be apt to go over this one presentation for the public as well, since you guys saw it last Thursday. We do have some UCB representatives on the call with us, should you guys have any questions. Also, Tom and I are here to answer anything from, from the city's point of view. UCB representatives that are with us are Mr. Wayne Barnes, he is head of operations for the US. Mr. Scott Sanford, he is US Program Management Head in Planning and Operations. And then Joe Zarzoli is the head of US Government Relations, and Janay Burke is the head of State Government Relations. Just give you a little background on UCB, they're a Belgian-based company, they're the largest pharmaceutical company in the state of Georgia. They have been headquartered in Smyrna for approximately 20 years. Their, or their campus location is at the, pretty much the intersection of Wendy Hill, Village Parkway, and Lake Park Drive. And I'll, and I'll give you the CD map in the next slide to give you a little better orientation. Right now, on that campus, they have about 110,000 square feet of workspace. And their campus is home to about 400 employees, which makes them roughly in the top 10 for Smyrna-based businesses for employee. Their location, if you guys have ever driven by Wendy Hill, headed to Parkway, as soon as you pass Village Parkway, you can see it on, on your right-hand side. UCB is proposing a three-phase improvement for the, for the campus. This request is primarily focused on this first phase. The first phase of the project is they'll be repurposing a, an existing building onsite that is used for warehouse and stuff like that. And turning it into 60,000 square feet of quality workspace. The interesting thing, once that commitment is done, it will be the first well-certified and lead-certified building in the state of Georgia with both those certifications. The project cost for this initial improvement is $23.5 million. And with this improvement, they'll be able to accommodate 100 new employees with an average with, with an with an average annual salary more than $100,000. The project is expected to take 18 months to complete. We are currently in the process of planning review, so we hope to get that process done here in May, and they can go hold their permits in June, or whenever we get the process done. Phases two and three will come after one, and those are expected to be another $24 million of of improvements, but that is not under consideration today, this is just for phase one. Just give you an idea of where on campus these improvements will be made. Building location is that building closest to the intersection of Village Parkway and Wendy Hill. And then there will be a new proposed parking lot up along Wendy Hill to support the additional employees. As we stated before, the, when you break down the fee rate waiver request, the estimated cost of construction for the project is $23.5 million. Our building fee calculations are based off estimated cost of construction, and that's $7 per thousand. So with a $23.5 million project, you're looking at $164,000 in building permit fees, and then the records fee are 10% of the building permits, so that's your additional $15,000 for a total of $185,000. When you work out the recapture, the recapture on those fees, you, we, the city will recapture those fees in 26 months after the completion of the project. And then if you break that, this incentive down per job, it's about $1,800 per new, per new job. The, the city's chapter 79, this is, the Planning and Development Section gives the authority to Mayor Council to approve these fee waivers. So it'll set the thresholds and everything for the city to consider. The, we bring the request to you, and Mayor and Council, you all will make the decision whether or not to approve it. With that being said, Community Development and Economic Development have both reviewed the request and everything. Founding the request, and we are recommending approval, and would like to see you go ahead and, and move this forward if you could.
Thank you, Rusty.
Yes, sir.
This is in Councilman Wagner's district.
Yes.
Turn it over to Austin.
Yeah, I just want to say that I think this is a great opportunity to expand a, one of the largest businesses in Smyrna. Proud to have that in Ward 2, and hopefully gonna add another 100 jobs here, and excited to see one of our corporate citizens deciding to take some extra steps and, you know, make sure that this building is both lead-certified and well-certified. I think it'll be great to have it as an example of what we can do going forward to make sure we're thinking about environmental concerns and thinking about the employees', you know, mental health and all that with the well-certification as well. So I'm excited for this project, I don't have any questions, I'm definitely in support of this, it's a worthwhile investment. Bring some more jobs in here and expand one of the businesses that we already have here in Smyrna.
Any other discussion from Council? All right, Austin, when you're ready.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the item as previously read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
That was Corky Welch, I think, was second, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Can you see them all Heather? What was the result, because I can't see them all.
Yes, sir, about 7-0.
Prove 7-0, thank you all, that's a great, what a great UCB representatives, thank you so much. What a great thing to have the first building in the state that's double-certified like that, and with everything that we're trying to do in the environmental stewardship realm, that's a great addition to our city, so we're looking forward to that very much, thank you so much. Item five is privileged licenses, we have none. Item six is formal business. 6A 2020-151, approval to award RFQ 20-021, City of Smyrna Whitfield drainage improvements to the lowest and responsive bidder. Exileer Construction located at 3442 Orange Wood Court, Marietta, Georgia 30062, in the amount of $303,900 to be funded out of the fiscal year 2020 Stormwater Fund and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The City of Smyrna requested bids for a unit price contract to do the Whitfield Street drainage improvements. 11 bids were received, and the lowest bidder is Exileer Construction in the amount of $303,900. It is the recommendation of the purchasing manager and our Public Works Director that this project be awarded to Exileer Construction in the amount of $303,000, not $303,900 to be funded out of the fiscal year 2020 Stormwater Fund.
Right, is this Mr. Lindley? Mr. Lindley?
Yes, sir. Motion to proceed as, as noted.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I might have, be on your toes, everybody. We've got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
That sounded like Susan, we have motion second, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
7-0, sir.
Prove 7-0, thank you. Item B, Resolution 2020-02, approval of Resolution 2020-02 to continue being a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and to enter into cooperation agreement for Cobb County, Georgia, and the City of Smyrna, program years 2021 through 2023. Ms. Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG funds have been used to pay for numerous public improvement projects in our low-to-moderate-income areas. The City of Smyrna desires to continue being a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant Program. The city desires to enter into a cooperation agreement with Cobb County's CDBG for program years 2021 through 2023. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020-02 to continue being a subrecipient of the Cobb County Community Development Block Grant Program and enter into a cooperation agreement for the program years 2021 through 2023.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, the, the CDBG program is, it's a great program that cities benefited from over the years. We've had quite a bit of, of investment in certain parts of the city, and we're fortunate to have a great administrator handling the program for us, and look forward to continuing participation in the, in the program to benefit to the city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, move to approve item 6B as previously read.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second from Ms. Wilkinson?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please raise your hand.
7-0, sir.
Thank you very much. Item seven, commercial building permits, we have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Heather, can you move that up a little bit, and Ms. Sadler Jones, could you please read the consent agenda for Council approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows, item A, approval of the April 16th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, approval of the April 20th, 2020 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, approval of excess cybersecurity coverage renewal with Towers Watson Chubb Insurance for $7,430, and authorize the mayor to grant authority to bind coverage and execute related documents. And item E, approval of the Ward One appointment to the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board, Mr. Sean Garcia, to fulfill term to expire December 31st, 2020.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All right, do I have a second? All right, Mr. Welch made a motion, and Mr. Lindley did a second, all those in favor, raise your hand, please.
7-0, sir.
Group 7-0, thank you so much, and it's just a quick note, Sean Garcia, who's gonna be on the KSB board, he and his wife have, among other things, a t-shirt company called Smyrna Swag, and they did the shirts for Support Smyrna, the Smurstrong shirts, and donated all of the proceeds to the effort, so thank you, Sean, for that, appreciate it very much. Item nine is Ward and Committee Reports, we'll start tonight, Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone, you know, this, one of the things that you mentioned in your mayor report, just the awesomeness of the community we live in, this has been a rough, certainly a rough couple of months, and, and more acutely over the last few weeks. Been a really rough time in the city, but it's been really inspirational to see people come together, really support each other, lift each other up, really shows the type of beautiful community we have here. I just want to encourage all the residents out there to continue to be safe, continue to do the things that got us this far, at least with, with the COVID-19 issues that we've had, we are definitely not out of the woods yet. I was actually out today, and I saw a good number of people out, but, you know, not having the masks on, not necessarily social distancing, so I know it's beautiful out, and everyone wants to get out, but let's be sure to do the things that, you know, that we're being told by at least the governor and the CDC and other officials that are helpful, even though we're getting kind of back out there, so that we don't spike up again. Be safe, everyone, and do take care, and I look forward to seeing more people in public soon, hopefully, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Tim Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple, couple of things, the education committee, the city's education committee met last week. We were joined by Dr. Howard, our, our school board rep, along with James Wilson, who was representing the district staff. So it's good discussions around how the city can effectively work with the districts when, in complex projects such as the, you know, the upcoming work at Campbell High School, and really, what we're interested And really, what, what we're interested in is how we can work with the district with those, when those changes impact, uh, city services and, and streets and infrastructure. So very productive meeting and appreciate, uh, the, yes, district representatives taking their time to meet with us. Uh, just to build on what, uh, Councilman Wheaton said, you know, stay safe out there. Beautiful weather this weekend. A lot of folks were out and about and completely understand it, but please do stay safe. Uh, take care of yourself, take care of your family, your neighbors, your friends. Um, it's really up to us individually to maintain, uh, good habits. Uh, business community is doing their part. I think they're moving slowly and, and, you know, making sure they're, they're going to operate in a safe way. So we have to do that ourselves individually too. So please do that. Uh, with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gould. And thank you again for my hat. I want everybody to see it. Pretty awesome. Tim ordered, uh, about ten thousand of these, and will personally deliver one to your house if you just, uh, call him on his cell phone.
So we got a bunch made, and former mayor Max Bacon was part of the idea. And the proceeds will go to the Smyrna Education Foundation. So just a little stab at it, and we'll see how it goes. And if it works, we'll, maybe we'll, we'll, maybe we'll do more.
Awesome. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. Anyway, I like those hats too. They're very nice. And, um, that's awesome. Um, just wanted to, um, to also reiterate what, um, uh, the other council members are saying. I saw a lot of people outside this past weekend, uh, enjoying the nice weather. But I just want to, uh, you know, hope everyone is, uh, keeping their distance and trying to stay safe. Also, I just want to reiterate what a wonderful community that we have. I also saw some of my constituents and, um, you know, just started hearing some really nice stories about people helping each other out in this time. People that might not, uh, have, uh, vehicles in order to go to the grocery store and get food. And, you know, just, uh, just heard a lot of great stories of, uh, with people helping each other and, um, you know, just, uh, taking care of each other. So that's awesome. Uh, we do have a great community. Thank you. Without a yield.
Thank you. Mr. Corky Welch.
Well, when you're fourth in line, everything's been said. I'd just like to remind people to use common sense and be careful out there. Stay healthy and safe. That's it. I yield.
Mr. Chad Lindley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say it's good to see everybody, uh, if you know it's virtually. Um, would echo what the, uh, the mayor's comments about, uh, what a proud send off it was, uh, Friday. Think it was, uh, truly Smyrna coming together and, uh, being, uh, being the great city that it is. Um, Austin Wagner and I will be, uh, talking with some folks in the morning. Uh, we had gotten some inquiries out of Rose Garden Hills about, uh, some holes in the, uh, the programs that are underway to feed, uh, some of the kids while the, uh, the school year, uh, is coming to a close. So we'll be working on that effort. And then to, uh, echo, uh, rep, uh, council member Gould's comments. Rear, uh, I was on the phone this afternoon with folks, uh, that, uh, bought the Campbell High School property and, uh, project. Uh, still a lot of, uh, a lot of folks trying to understand what's going on over there. So working, uh, working through that process, and we'll be pushing out information as we get it. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Austin Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, as, uh, Corky said, it's a bit of a broken record now at this point when you're this far down the line and everything that we're doing. But, yeah, just reiterate, stay safe, stay healthy. As the mayor said earlier, um, we're not really seeing that fourteen-day decline in, in cases yet. So we've all got to take some, uh, individual sacrifices, hopefully, um, take those individual sacrifices and get us further down this path. Um, make sure that we kick this thing, and, um, that's the only way we're going to, um, come out of this and another side and not see a second spike. Uh, without I yield.
Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Um, I think now everything has already been said, but I just want to thank, uh, Sean for being willing to serve Keep Smyrna Beautiful. And I know he'll be a great, uh, addition to the board and, uh, to the city.
Tammy Sadler Jones.
No report, Mayor.
Mr. Scott Cochran.
Oops. I don't have anything either. They've had already been said.
Ms. Heather. Next item, next item is show cause hearings. We have none. And the next item is citizen input. Heather, can you run everybody that's on the call, um, who may want to provide citizen input through the process of doing that? And then we'll open it up to anybody from the public who has any comment.
Yes, sir. Citizen input, um, allows for a three-minute, um, speech that you'd like to give or any comments you'd like to make regarding, um, any business of the city to the mayor and council. Um, if you have any items that you'd like to discuss, if you, uh, opened up the callers that have called in and unmuted them. If I have any other, uh, people on here that would like to speak, if you'll just, uh, shoot me a quick chat, I'll unmute you as well. And we will allow you that opportunity if you'll just announce your name and your address. If you live in the city limits, then we will get you started and start the timer for three minutes.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to make comment? Please send a, a chat message to Ms. Heather now, or unmute your line and, and speak, please.
I have no chats, Mayor.
All right. Thank you and appreciate everybody. Uh, there's no further business to be brought before this body. Declare this meeting adjourned at seven thirty-two. Be safe, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you.